Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you all for being here. We're going to go ahead and get started because we'd like to get to a question and answers, and we want people to be educated about our school budget. The goal of the show, but really the purpose of tonight is to be fully transparent in terms of the creation of a school budget, what it means, some of the vocabulary that we use day-to-day, and education that our community may not know. However, it does impact our community when we talk about school budget, when we talk about taxes. So the goal of this evening is really to educate everyone, answer questions. If you ask, then we get three of you with slides. If you jot down two questions, I can send them to us. And if we need to go back to your slides or revise clarification of questions, then we can share it at that time. First, I'm going to have my team over here to stand up. They play a part of our office, and they play a big role in terms of creating the school budget, along with our student goals, as well as factor, the water, the violence, the factor, and the special education. Ms. Case and I are both presenting the student. Ms. Case is our assistant administrator, and Dr. Walsh is our personal educator. Okay, so first, we just wanted to get started. In terms of school budget, it is all connected to our district goals. So we are still under a, we created a five-year strategic plan. Our strategic goals are student success, SEL, mental health, wellness, community engagement and communications, facilities and finance, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. So our strategic plan actually was finalized right around COVID. So a lot of the goals are related to that time, and then we've been updating our strategic plan to ensure that we're adhering and addressing the needs to the noun for our students right now. In terms of the budget, our goals are to commit, as commitment to physical responsibility, providing a highly quality, high-quality education for all students, continue to improve and strengthen instructional programs, professional development, education offerings for our students, particularly in the areas of math and literacy, and curriculum alignment through transition years, and continuously support and grow passing services. We can talk a little bit about that as well. And continue to support spending programs for special education and student services. Good evening. So as we talk, we're going to discuss what is a school budget. The school budget at its core is a variety for our students that we just reflected in the first slide, and that it should be centered on our children and their aspirations for the future. While we look at, we know that in practice, it's brought into term by financial considerations and budgeting. And so with that, our school operates on a July, June calendar, so it goes on a fiscal calendar. And then at the end of the day, in order for the state to improve our budget, it has to have two key goals. Our tax revenues have to remain within the cap or within cap allowances. So some of the cap allowances that a district can have, there are four cap allowances that a district can have. The first one is a healthcare waiver, so that's any time that you're in multiple times for multiple years. We have a lot of health care that's within over 15%. We have to wonder what happens with the state budget. They have taken out surplus out of their own in order to help that. But with that, our, we have utilized that waiver. Along with the second one, it is an enrollment waiver. We have not utilized that waiver. The third one is a sent-to-perceival relationship, because we are pre-aided well, and we do not qualify for that. And last but not least, there is a shift to, and that was when the state was going through like reform intention. We do not qualify, but there are some states that are still paying taxes from the state, and so they wouldn't qualify for that. And then, so total revenues must balance with these categories. So what are the things that we utilize to start the budget process? We utilize planning tools, we consider contingencies, manage risk, be physically responsible, reflect our values, and then we need to consider safe parts of the project for the future. So our job is to make sure that the budget is developed to ensure thorough and efficient education. So how we do that is we again go back to our strategic planning goals. We look at our district and school-wide goals for each of the seven buildings, program needs, how it relates to compliance and regulation, anything that's mandated, we must ensure that we are including that, any mandates, we just make sure we're adhering to, extracurricular activities, and staff. This was our budget timeline, so while we get to do our budget hearing, there's one timeline here, and then between April and May, the budget is actually developed throughout the entire school. So we felt that it was important for the public to know that the timeline actually starts really early on. And in the fall, once we started school, once the school opened, it's around school, we actually started meeting with our principals and our directors to start to work on this school budget. So we get a lot of questions about it, right?
Exactly.
So this slide particularly, we pulled data that shows the trends from 2015 to 2025. So if you look, I don't just, sorry, this clip doesn't have a timeline. But if you look at 2015, we're at 3,720 students. District why? 24, 25, we're at now currently 3,909 students. You see, each year, it is fluctuating, but like last year, we had 4,003 students. We calculate students that went away, they were in town, or graduated class. We had a huge graduating class last year, so they exit. So it does fluctuate, but right now, you can see through the last, at least through the last three years, since 2023, we've kind of linked a little about the current market. So what's important to notice too is that while enrollment is invasive and it's fluctuating, our special ed population is not. Our special ed population concerns. So over the last 10 years, our special ed population has increased 260 students. That is significant when it comes to budget. We are all around least restrictive, having our students stay in our community. But there are costs for students that could need specialized programs that are outside of our, outside of the set of levels. Sometimes that cost is driving $3.5 million in our school budget. So if you, and I just want to point out that it's from 2015 to where we are today, 764 students are receiving special education services, which if we think about it, I see it as a positive. I know it impacts the budget, but at the same time, you have families that are moving here that know that we are providing a thorough and efficient education, we're addressing all of the needs of our students. So that's the other piece too, so students and parents are moving in. The other piece, a big question that everyone is asking, how is housing, the new housing impacting enrollment? Is it impacted? Yes. We, I'll take Glassworks for example. We were able to pull some data, and we have 120 students from Glassworks alone that are attending our classes.
Where?
Glassworks. Okay. So we recently just, I literally received a report on Friday. Our demographer, if you were, attended any of our, attended any of our coordinations, the Board of Education was in support of doing a demography study, demography study, sorry, from Rutgers, and we recently received that report. In that report, I can only highlight, I didn't make through the monetary business in my mind, but in that report, and I want to highlight, and I also want to share, to ensure the board has, has an opportunity to review, to refer to the public report, but, but a few things that I learned from the report, 16, total population in both towns, we had an increase of 16.9 in the population percent. So thank you. Just a minute. In the report, we'll be able to share up that how, in terms of what we're going to look like into 2023. Quick review was, is that our schools will be impacted by the new developments.
Can you just explain in Glassworks, Ms. Perez, that the specialty?
So out of the 120 students that are currently attending our schools, 40 students are special education. And we have quite a few that are being transported to our schools from that area to, over 90 students. And the study for the demographer was actually done by Cindy, just so that everybody knows the company that has come out. So the purpose of this slide, and why we did want to pull the special ed population is because that percentage is growing at a faster rate than even our enrollment. So it's at least, it's grown 6% over the last year. So we wanted, we get a lot of questions about staffing, if we're at ratio, the low ratio, what are our student class sizes look like? This slide here indicates, has all of our students in each of the buildings. It's demonstrating the ratio teacher to student ratio. We're at one teacher to 11 students. That's in line with the county average. And then for administration, it's one administrator to just about 200 to 300 students. If you look at that, that is, that ratio is a little off. We are above the ratio. We have less administrators. The county average is one administrator to about 117 students. In the county, that's not the state, that's the county. So we'll just talk about a couple of budgetary challenges. We know substitute rates. We have tried to fill over 4,600 absences. Our fill rate with the company that we utilize is about 15%, actually higher than the other school districts that they're utilizing. It's very hard to find substitutes. And with that, we projected 3.5 million in substitute coverage, and that is up from this year currently of 3.3. And then custodial coverage, we do outsource. Our maintenance is in-house, but our custodial coverage is outsourced, and that's 3.1 million. That did go out for a request proposal, and will be in our fifth of five years for that. So for the 26, 27 school year, we will have to go out for a new bid. For healthcare costs, next year, we are projected at 17.6 million, so a little over 18% of our budget for healthcare. And with that, again, we talked about double digits rising over the last three to five years. Some significant changes with that as well is there's a cost called Chapter 44 that employees versus employers have to pay into. That completely changed what goes on. It used to be prior to that, something called Chapter 78, and Chapter 78 was a percentage of salary versus a percentage of the healthcare premium. That is still in light, and those people had their grandfather into that program. However, Chapter 44 took over in 2018, and that is actually a cost per percentage off the salary. And so what happens with that is a employee can be capped and pay more health benefits. So if health benefits cost 15,000, they can be capped at nine, we would pay the difference. And in future years, when that goes up 15%, the district is taking out 100% of that cost. So it's a huge increase to the district's budget versus what it used to be. So a lot of times, or a lot of different, we talk about breakage, and that breakage will come from salary or benefits, when someone may retire and someone may come on. However, that breakage has become less and less as time has gone on, and health benefits have risen to the double digits. And then for special education, for addition placement, we have three and a half million dollars that is spent for our students to go out of district for students that we cannot cover in district. The difference for that is those schools do not have to have a 2% cap, and we've seen double digits. A lot of times, we'll get letters, or what'll happen from those schools is they can actually come back after their budget has been approved by the state, that they can come back two to three years after to ask us for whatever the differential is. So a lot of times, you'll see that we have to approve a cost that's after the fact. Yet we don't have that ability to do so. And they have the ability to then also increase costs for the next year at any cost that they deem necessary to run their program in this school. So a lot of times, you might receive a letter that says, please encourage project over 10% for next year. Yet we are still capped to the 2% cap.
Ms. Case, I'm sorry, or Ms. Perez, can you just explain a little bit about what happens with the substitutes? So those are all, all buildings, all kinds of classes. So for example, if it's a chemistry teacher, they're not getting really close to instruction, they're getting lessed, you know, that was left by the teacher maybe. What about if it's, and does that include just teachers? Does it include staff, anybody else in that number? And is there the additional cost for like faculty?
So any, any staff member under the, our teacher association contract? So that would be clerical, instructional assistants, teaching staff, nurses, nurses. That would also have our say, and if the company that we utilize cannot support that coverage, we're very blessed that a lot of our teachers will come and have less coverage, and they'll take, you know, their time out of their lunch or out of their prep period. And then obviously, there's a value for that, if that cost is covered, but then they're grateful that they're getting this benefit, so.
So if a teacher, if you can't get subs, a teacher goes in, what is your sub rate then? 118. You can't get a sub, your teacher gets a copy, what do you pay for that? Yeah, whatever their salary is. So if you don't get subs, then you would be, your, your actually probably pay more if you have teachers covering more based on your salary. Secondly, what do you pay the, this company that fills the subs? If I didn't get the subs, I have to go through that website, right? And I get the 120, how much you pay them? If I pay them 100, so they may come every day, they're going to get $30,000 on top of it.
So we have to know, so what happens is, because of the cost of these, kind of, could we? For the cost of what we pay for substitutes, we actually had to go out for competitive bids. That requires us to put the bid package together, it has to get approved by the state, and then we have to then go ahead, go out to bid. Companies come bid on what they believe their services cost, they make sure this gets filled out, and then we have that contract for either one or two years. This particular instance, last time, it was for two persons.
Could you, could you not just go directly and hire subs for a buck 40? If your rate's low, some schools will pay hundreds, some schools will pay 150. Since you're paying $38, and the subs get 120, could you not raise that up a little bit so you can get more subs in? Your school wasn't contracted, you saved $38 and you're paying this company. Also, if you get more subs in, you're paying less for the teacher coverage, like the teacher's salary, so maybe it's a hundred thousand, or you get all this.
So I wasn't here.
So you get a sub, just say, I come in, and you pay me 120, you're paying them $38. And say, another teacher's out, so you have to, and you don't have another sub, so you have to put the chemistry teacher or the math teacher, and you're paying them their hourly salary, which is like $9, or depending on them, if they're, except they're, they're in their salary. Is there another way to maybe make it where you pay the subs more, but then you save on this company, and you save for the teacher's coverage? You say, like, coming, coming, teachers are out, and they get subs. And that's, that's somewhat associated with.
Do you have anything to add? We could go back and run the cost analysis on it. However, why some districts are able to versus why some districts aren't is potentially how void your staffing is in their personnel department, and you would have to hire more to be, or be able to organize self-coverage, the program, everything behind it. I don't know when the change happened, that we outsourced, but that's why.
Maybe you get a internal person just to handle it at a cheaper salary, because, you know, you got a lot of people here that, you know, they have their sick pay, they have their, their personal, they have their, their family illness, but that might be a little costly, I would say, in that area. And then the second thing is, when is the teacher's contracts up? They, who's just, it was just done? What is, okay. So what is, what is the average percentage raised, did you give to the, to the teachers, not the administrators? What percentage?
3.75.
3.7, and the administrators, are they giving her in that range, or higher?
Less.
Less, what about the aides?
The aides, the parent pressure together?
So you got 3.7.
And Monmouth County average at the time was 3.77. If we could, if you could, you, if you can just jot down your questions, so then this way we can flow through the slides, and then we can address any questions at the end, because then this way you'll kind of flow a little better. So let's talk about the school budget. This is kind of just going to be the flow of slides for the remainder of tonight. How are we funded? Where does the sourcing of fundings come from? What does adequacy mean, under adequacy, spending cap, reserve cap? Tax levy? What's the tax incentive for a grant? And then, you know, what is our district revenue stream? So with that, where does our money come from? Our biggest chunk comes from local property taxes, and that's 70.4% of your budget. The next category is state aid. State aid is broken down into different pockets of money and different categories. So what we receive is equalization aid, special education aid, transportation aid, security, and technology. And this is the first year after the seven-year reform that the state had, that they did some changes. Some of those significant changes are that they went from looking at a one-year lookback for equalization to a three-year average, and then they did the same thing for district income. So those things increased what they believe our towns are able to pay, which reduced our equalization yield by about 3.7 million. And then for special ed, categorically, the biggest change there was that instead of using census data, they actually went off of what our, what we call is our application for state aid, and that always happens around the October 15 snapshot date. And so they actually doubled what we said is currently enrollment in our district, and gave us money based on that. So we had an increase of a little over 2.5 billion in that category. So with that, the next part of our funding sources come from federal funds. Well, state aid, just so you know, the total state aid for our district is 25.1%. For federal funding, those are things like Title I, IDEA, and before this, golden funding. So every year, we utilize those. So for IDEA, that's for our individual disability education application, special education. And so with that, we try to keep our risk low, so when we utilize those fundings, we utilize it to offset our out-of-district cost for our special education that go out of district. Next year, we're projecting that to be $712,000. And the reason why is because the state normally tells us that we have to budget at 85% of whatever our grades are. This year, they let us know that we cannot go over 75%, so we are seeing a decrease as we budget for next year. And then same thing for our title grants, we receive Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. And each one of those has different categories. So Title I is used for targeted assistance for any of our low-income areas. And then Title II is usually for our professional development, and Title III is for immigrant, and Title IV is for what the state considers low rent. So with that, next year, that would make up 1.3% of our total, of our total district budget. And with that, the problem is, we've seen that, you know, just in the past couple of days, they pulled back over $85 million from 20 districts. So what will that look like for our future? And how will we be able to fund that if they don't come to fruition with that? And there's a lot of recs that are coming out saying what we do or do not have to do, and that can also be based on the work the state does. So we'll be paying close attention to that, but currently, what we have now has been projected through September of 2025. Also, one of the biggest changes for us was SEMI, for what they call Medicaid reimbursement, and that is required again by federal and by state. So last year, when we built our budget, they were requiring that we had a minimum of 100. Last year, when they did that, they told us we had to project our revenue source for that at $190,000, and so we did. And mid-year, they decided that they're only going to pay us nickels on every session. So we are seeing a reduction in that. So next year, when we're looking at the 25, 26 budget, they told us to project $23,000. So that is an area that we have to make up revenue in, just to keep our bound, our district balance budgeted. And then last but not least, we also utilize other revenues throughout the district. Those things would be tuition from out-of-district students. So if we're receiving students from another town, we're taking them in, and they may be helping us, we're charging that district revenue, and they're paying us. The next thing that we do is we have interest income, so we try to utilize any money that we're not currently spending for something into a high-interest-bearing amount, so that we can replenish and make money on money that we're not yet utilizing. And then we also utilize facility rentals. We went and did a, the board was able to reapprove the new policy, so that our categories change from five categories to four, so that we could change percentages of grades, especially since our facilities are utilized a lot. We want to ensure that we're receiving money back, so we can push that back into our facilities. And then we also utilize shared services, that we'll touch upon a little bit. And then last but not least, we'll talk about fund balance and surplus, and what that means. So with all those four wrapped up, that's 4.5% of our budget. So when we go to the next slide, what does fund balance mean? Fund balance is like having a savings account? Paid your 12 if we have them, we have to put them on our budget. So if ever we're to receive a grant or a donation, initially, it's a direct source, right? So if there's a reason or a clause, and then we can only utilize it for that. We do utilize those, and we do apply for them. One of the things that we applied for recently from the state was one creasable expansion for the facilities, and we were able to secure 1.73 million. So we, anytime we take it, we also have teachers that write grants for check-a-lays, sometimes we have Walmart grants, and very specific direct clauses. We could potentially, typically, they've gone to student activities for very specific clauses outside the operation budget. So fund balance, fund balance goes into what our operation cost is. So when you're budgeting, if you have $100, and then at the end of the year, you have 10, that's your fund balance. That fund balance is able to be used like a savings account, and in essence, it's be able to help offset the next year's budget, as well as potentially go into what are called reserve accounts. And so let's just go over the three reserve accounts that our district has. So the first one has capital reserve, and anytime money comes out of And anytime money comes out of a reserve account, it's at no accident. So capital reserve accounts have been utilized for facility projects, like when we did at the high school, the turf field and the track. Or sometimes HVAC projects, or whatever, going to be group replacement in our future. So the next that we have is maintenance reserve. And this district has utilized maintenance reserve withdrawal to balance our budget for many, many years. Um, with that, we utilize it for repairs. It cannot be utilized towards salaries. It has to be utilized towards one-time costs. And then last but not least, there's emergency reserve. It is the most difficult to withdraw money from. It also needs, it is also real supposed to be for unanticipated general costs. With those unanticipated general causes, you have to get approval by the state to utilize that funding.
So Ms. Case, so you call it a savings account. Um, but I think what I'm hearing is like a savings account for household withdrawal to balance your checkbook, right? And hoping to be able to put that back, that savings back, when you had the money back. But I'm assuming that for school districts, you're not getting more money, you're getting less money. So it's harder to put, you need to replace that savings account fund, or you need to complete it, it's not being refreshed.
Right. So, uh, we get audited every single year. And one of the main things that we've been told by our auditor every single year since I've come here is that we do not surplus enough money. We should surplus at least two percent, really two to five percent. Uh, we surplus under one. So it's very challenging to utilize that money to either put into a savings account or replenish the money that we've been taking out of these maintenance reserve accounts. And so that will play into future budgeting.
So our next slide is, we know that when we send out information to our community, like I mentioned earlier, that we use under adequacy, spending caps, and some terminology that may not be familiar with everyone. So I'm going to have Ms. Case share exactly what that means. Um, and again, if there's questions, then just please jot them down. We'll clarify.
So the state did some refunding formula in twenty ten. And with that, uh, it was decided that school budgets could not go over two percent or two percent, and those four cap allowances that we talked about earlier. And with that, part of the calculation that the state utilizes is what's called an adequacy budget. That adequacy budget, they determine is a weighted average for our enrollment that you saw on the chart prior. And the weighted enrollment is at least four kindergarten and then highest four high school students. And so they use that so that they can decide whether a district is over adequacy or under adequacy. And what does that mean? That means if the state determines that your budget should be ten dollars and you spend nine, you're under adequacy. And if your state determines that you spend eleven dollars, then you're over, and you have to explain what that additional dollar was being spent on. Typically, districts will say what's being spent on your music, your arts, your extracurriculars. So with that, and with the formula change from last year to this year, and doing the three-year average versus that one-year lookback, it was determined that we are under adequacy. That we, in our first year ever going into twenty-five, twenty-six, spent under what they consider our local fair share to be. So what is local fair share? Local fair share has two important indicators. The first one is property value, and the second one is district income. Now, for property value, Monmouth County decided to be part of a pilot program in two thousand thirteen, where they reassess your property every single year. And with that, it increases your property value, which increases the ability for what the state determines can be your local fair share. The other component to this is district income. They are actually taking what each of your households make, determining what that is for a town's amount, and then doing the same thing on an average lookback over those three years and giving it an average. And those two indicators together create local fair share. So they determine that your local fair share, you can pay more, and but, the district budget for your local taxes is only a base number that can go up two percent. So the state determined this year that they are going to allow, for the first time ever, a tax incentive program.
Just, just one point, um, Ms. Case, before you move on. I just want to repeat what you just said in my own thoughts. Um, so the state, the town reassesses our properties to be what they feel they're worth. And then we, what they're saying is that we should be taxed on the worth of the house. And if we're not, then the homeowners need to make up that difference. So they, they feel that we're not paying enough taxes because our homes are here, but our taxes are here.
The state, the state says that.
Right. So they're, they're assuming if our homes are going up in value, we're making that kind of, we're making more money.
And your district income.
And your district, right. And therefore, you should be paying more in tax, so.
That your town has the ability to pay more in taxes.
So when they say we're under adequate, the state is saying that we are not being paid what we should be paying, but they're not going to give us the money they want the taxpayer to give.
Correct. They're saying that the local towns can pay for more themselves. And now, with this tax incentive program, they're giving you the ability to do so.
Right.
Because before, there was no mechanism for you to do that.
Right. So the incentive on their end is that they raise the taxes, and they're going to give us a tiny little bonus.
Right. So currently, the way the tax incentive program is set up, they would give you five percent for every dollar you increased a tax levy. Or how they explain it, for a hundred million dollars, they'll give you fifty cents.
This is, the tax incentive program, it's important to notice, um, is not, has to be approved at the budget hearing. In trying. They have asked, which school districts were eligible? Which twenty districts are eligible in the county? Most of our neighboring towns are eligible. They have asked that we complete, we're willing to move forward, that they ask that we complete an application and have it submitted, but I'm able to work forward to it. What about the counties that don't have that? Are they also, are they filed for this tax incentive program? Is it Monmouth County and Willoughby?
In the state of New Jersey, there are three hundred districts that are eligible. So that's fifty percent of school districts in the state of New Jersey are eligible to participate or apply for the tax incentive program. So it's three hundred districts that are active. Comes out of, it'll come out of tax, and the tax levy increase. So for every dollar you increase, every, for every dollar you increase in the local town tax, they'll give you five cents.
It, it's not that like, if the district raised a thousand dollars extra from the community, that the district would only be able to spend in our district, five percent of that, is the, what is it? Five dollars? Fifty, fifty dollars, whatever, I'm sorry, that amount. Um, it's that we actually would be raising all of the taxes here that would go all into the school budget. And then in addition, the state would give a little bit more, like, five percent.
So, so for each million?
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm in favor, I'm just saying.
This just, and this is information. So we can get to the questions, and then just jot it down. So we have the visuals, so then this way you kind of get to thinking in terms of that. So for the tax incentive program itself, uh, the way it works is that, again, for every million, the state will match five percent. So how are we eligible? We're eligible because this is, again, the first year ever that the state is determining that we are below adequacy. And that our state tax levy falls below what they deem to be our local fair share. So if you didn't have those two components together, you would not qualify. And in order for us to even qualify for this program, we also have to exhaust all of our eligible adjustments. And so what do we mean by that? We mean we have to take our two percent, plus we have to take if there are any cap allowances. Currently, what we've had to use in the last few years is the healthcare adjustment waiver. So we would be using our healthcare adjustment waiver. In a prior year, honestly, two years ago, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we were creating that budget, and we had a huge impact to Chapter forty-four. We had a health waiver adjustment of about one point two million dollars. We did not use all of that, so that is what they consider going into banked cap. Banked cap gives you the ability to then use that leftover money for the next three years. So as we were creating this year's budget and knowing that we had challenges, uh, some of those challenges that we were facing, it wasn't only just the healthcare waiver, but also utilities. Uh, you know, utilities, gas is going up seventeen percent. Electric is going up twenty-two to twenty-six percent. And that is impacting us significantly because we have over about six hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet that we need to equip. And, um, it is, it is impacting us quite significantly. And the reason why.
Ms. Case, I'm sorry, can you do the poll?
So in July of every year, for utilities, they go out for an auction. That auction was, it was like twenty-two dollars or twenty-eight dollars, I can't remember the exact amount, but it actually increased to over two hundred and seventy dollars a kilowatt. And so why did that happen? Because two, um, two plants closed, and we're not creating enough energy in order to supply all of the electric that we need as a safety, not us, as a safety. And so they are considering reopening three miles so that they can help them. Uh, they were also anticipating that solar would take off higher, and it would actually create more energy generation. It did not. Uh, we do go out for a bit every single year for electricity consumption. We'll continue to do so. But that's not only going to impact us here, it's going to impact us everywhere. And we've already started to see some of that impact happen through vendors. We're receiving notifications from vendors that our costs for supplies are going to increase three to seven percent. And that they can't project what that cost will be either due to potential tariffs. And they're writing letters to us, letting us know that these are things that we need as consumables in the district to run our programs. Yet they're going to double or triple the cost that we used to have. This is the chart we shared, um, I think it was two weeks ago, in terms of what the tax levy or the tax incentive program would look like. Um, the minimal amount, if you apply for is one million. The state would then contribute fifty thousand to one million. And we're in the district, what is eligible for five point eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Um, the state, let's just say, you know, free, let's raise taxes, which we're not, that the state would contribute almost three hundred thousand dollars. But, um, we're not here to say we are disagreed with the program. Um, I think in my town, a similar situation. I have to say, though, I haven't received any information from my, um, district. So I'm learning a lot, I'm learning more here than I am working here as opposed to what our superintendent is providing us. Um, so I, I, I feel you, I empathize. So it's not about necessarily going into, I think, in recommendations to the board without, you know, understanding what, what we're asking for or what, what the options are in terms of, um, providing additional funding.
Ms. Perez, I just wanted to know, what you touched upon, it's very important. Our, our sister's districts are also looking into and or applying for this. Um, but a lot of them do not have the community feedback behind it. So I want to give you guys credit for coming out and allowing us to talk to the community first. Um, so that's much appreciated, um, the transparency.
So in terms of now, the tax incentive program, I think, um, you know, the board has asked, well, what happens? Where is the money coming? So, or what can we use it for? A few slides before, we said that the budget was needed and we wanted to provide a thorough education. This tax incentive program, that's, the money is utilized for providing thorough and efficient education. So if we look back and we connect it to the team who's been in terms of making sure, ensuring that we're, it's aligned to curriculum, to strategic plan and our school and district goals. So they keep, the areas that would be impacted and where the money would be utilized is curriculum and instruction. So maximizing professional development, instructional material, curriculum material for the classroom. Special education, it would be utilized to enhance, provide programming, um, offset some of the costs with the out-of-district. As Ms. Case already mentioned, that we already anticipate a decrease in IDPA. Most of our, all of that money is utilized to, to cover for out-of-district. However, it still doesn't, I feel that's even a dent in respect to three point five million dollars on out-of-district. Um, intervention supports, included, provide targeted assistance to not only our struggling students, but also, um, closing achievement camps and enrichment programs are on here. And then to health services, um, for the last five years, we work with effective school solutions. We provide, um, intensive therapeutic services to at-risk students. That has decreased a cost of placing students out of district, gen ed or special ed, at least three point five million dollars by having the one contract and agreement that we have with the private services partners. So that, those are the types of programs and enhancing the private management of our students. Um, student support services, um, essentially providing supports to our families, family engagement, community partnership, with students.
Ms. Perez, so, um, I know you said special education, um, students, population increases. What are we seeing in terms of mental health? Sorry, is this for students?
It's a struggle for this. It's a struggle. Um, in terms of, we've worked really hard in terms of this budget here, in terms of helping, um, for our community vendors and contractors for the services that we're providing currently because of the cost. Because we need, we need to, um, really make some difficult decisions in terms of where money is being spent in board's tax incentive program. So we've worked with, um, different vendors, um, because we were asking then to increase services for those mental health issues. We're no longer seeing, it's, like, years ago, it used to be more our special ed population and it was having difficulty with self-recreation. We're not seeing that. It's crossed the board from elementary all the way on up to high school. So we are very, very proud of the team, our, with our content providers to be able to increase those services for not only our at-risk but also training for working with students that are at the number level, perhaps. But to help also includes the state, we are required to do risk assessments. That is not, that is mandatory, that is not funding. So all of your school counselors, your social workers, your school psychologists, if a child is in need, safety is number one. They are to stop the victim when they're conducting a risk assessment, which the team in just across every building is excellent in doing that. But that is not funding. That is not funding. So sometimes we need to hedge that in terms of work excellence. And we, they need to, they need to complete their regular day operations for their day-to-day work. And sometimes we have to, we have to process that. Um, that's a cost to the district.
Ms. Perez, can you explain what a risk assessment is?
So a risk assessment is any student that says that he needs help from himself or others. So, and it starts. So it starts, like I said, elementary, we announced it years ago, we're anticipating certain targets, I mean, students are struggling in preschool, high school, that's at the elementary. Which, again, we do a lot of batch, I always say, I always want to, um, deep cover, but there's only so much. We worked really hard on that contract, we were able to save for our upcoming year, $180,000 by just saying the predicament that we're in, we're receiving a reduction in aid, et cetera, and we negotiated. Those are things that we didn't have to create years ago because we were being fairly thundered and there weren't these increasing costs. So, you know, so I was proud to have that down $180,000. They will be using our district to market them. So tomorrow I'm doing something with the campaign. So we are, and that's all free, but we're doing it because we want to increase the cost for our students. So other areas, and Ms. Perez touched upon, the revenue generated that we are bringing in. We are really, really creative. Like I just said, I will work for free for a company and do a chat or a podcast, whatever they need to do their help in their marketing, we do that to help bring down the cost. In addition to that, Ms. Perez mentioned the facilities usage, how we change the policy, we will change the policy in terms of bringing in revenue that way. For example, the YMCA are foreign after here. For years, they were not paying, so they were not contributing to the services. We are now seeing that. Preschool expansion aid, we're very creative, we're not doing any, we're adhering to regulations in terms of how to utilize the funding for preschool expansion aid. We receive that money, and it's a lot of money, it's over $6.8, $7.8 million. We're serving 440 students, 440 students. Added that funding, though, what we utilize the money is to offset salaries and benefits, meaning that if there's preschool going on at Clifford Elementary, we offset salaries for the administrator, the nurse, the school counselor. Strackmore, for years, in the main drive, we're sharing our school counselor. With preschool expansion aid, we were able to provide a council for each and every college. We were not able to do that without preschool expansion aid. So we utilize, in terms of funding, social services, teacher salaries, instructional assistance, everything is included in the preschool expansion. Tuition in, so we have our reach program, 18 to 21, that, I'm just using that program as an example. We have pre-students that are from another district that they are paying our district to be able to attend our program. So that helps offset the salaries for benefits for teaching staff. And they're also, the kids are also able to socialize and, you know, be part of, meet up with new kids, which is really nice. In addition to that, we have a transportation jointure, which just simply means that we're working with other districts to cover, say, some transportation routes, whether they're to add a district, they may be a vocational school, so we're able to share that cost. Shared services, we, our revenue is about a little over $400,000 for shared services with other districts. And then, most recently, on our board agenda, we now will be advertising sponsorships, so which will also, we projected some revenue for that as well. Sure. So basically, with shared services, we work with, I'll give an example, Belmar. We work with their district, one of our instructional master, the master teacher for preschool, we share her one day a week, and we're able to generate, say, $30,000 a day pay us. So while it's not impacting her work, she's still able to complete the four days a week in district, which she wants to do. That one day helps with right now for $30,000. Another shared services, we share a clean haven agreement with Kingsford, as well as what you, we share apparel, business office, technology. So we just wanted to let you know, there are some tax assistance programs. One of them extends senior degrees. I believe Aberdeen is doing a workshop on this on May 8th, 2:30 and 4:00. And just to explain what that is. And then the IRS will from time to time send us the notices, and they are allowing, if you do an electronic filing, for it to be free this year. Just wanted to let you know some of the things that would help there. They'll also be talking, I believe Aberdeen, about the annual program as well, and state Jersey, so that there are some tax-free benefits to that. So what's next for us? We did approve our tentative budget on, I think, March 20th, and so then it was able to be submitted to the county office on March 21st. This did not include any tax incentive initiative that came out after the fact. So the reason why we have an April 10 board meeting and then where we will have a board resolution on this tax incentive program, and the reason why we need to do that is because the state requires us to have the application due to them if we are going to participate, though later than April 14. With that being said, then we would change our tentative to our approved budget, and we would potentially have our public hearing on April 24th. Some of the things that we changed to April 24th deadline is the state has to have it back to us within four days before so that we can advertise in the paper. That is an election calendar ruling. So in order for us to even have a public hearing, we have to ensure that it was advertised four days prior to when our public hearing takes place. The election calendar also dictates the dates we are allowed to have our public hearing, and that would be between April 24th and May 7th.
So with all of those challenges, you said the budget was submitted, so how and what was the focus, what didn't make it onto the budget and what didn't make it onto the budget?
So I mentioned contracted services, right? So like school about the mental health piece, and we decreased that cost by $180,000. We've also decreased it, so we, not only do, not only do we have Madawan Aberdeen staff members, we also contract out services for some specialists. So for example, speech language therapy, occupational therapists, some counselors, all of those contracted services is usually aligned to students' IDPs. So we were able to increase that cost, and in terms of, like you mentioned, like is it easy or does it save, do you save money with hiring your own as opposed to contracting? So in this particular scenario, we were able to do a cost analysis, so we will hire some part-time individuals, and that will bring down the cost of contracted services. So we saw some, I'm gonna say revenue focus, saw whether we could align some costs.
I just wanted to ask, there was a, we tried to, there was a lot of questions online. People were asking, so I just jotted down a bunch of them. So moving forward, I know there was, the demographer said, where do they foresee our district to be in enrollment in the next year? If I, I think I'm right in saying, you had said closer to 5,000?
Yes.
So we're at 4,000 right now? Okay, so people had asked about if this money would be able to pay for transportation, more busing, subscription busing. I know people, a lot of people have been asking about that. So I just wanted you guys to talk to that because if we did want to bring back that, what would we be doing then to possibly bust these extra thousand children moving in the next year?
I would predict that you have to cut somewhere else, because if you're going to have an increase in enrollment, you have to anticipate that you're going to have an increase with transportation costs.
So, Ms. Perez, I know the public hearing is on April 24th, but just so the public's aware, currently, we have a physically sound budget for '25, '26. I know you'll get into the details at the 24th meeting, but we are balanced. There are concerns that I think we should be transparent about in terms of moving forward with these increasing costs, what that could potentially mean is at risk in the future. And that this is really, this, even if this is, if this were to be voted on correctly.
Right. So what we're looking at, right, is a band-aid. We're on a boat, the boat has a hole, we're trying to put a band-aid over it, we're trying to bail water out as quickly as possible. You know, we've been doing this for this 2% cap for over 10 years with our consumer price index in New Jersey being well over 2%. And so we're really starting to feel the effects. You know, we hear it often about our facilities, and we hear you, and you see it too, and it's a huge challenge. You know, we want to do more every single day, but then it was at the cost of, you know, stamping our student fees, and so we picked those over that. And then the issue too, you know, just going back to transportation for a minute, is over five years ago, we transported, you know, 800 students less than we do now. And so right now, we're transporting over 2,100 students, whether that's in our district or outside of our district. We do, obviously, talked about our special ed has to go to added district placement, they would need to be transported there. We've seen definitely an increase throughout the state in homeless and having to ensure that we transport that. And then one of the other significant costs is that we are required to transport non-public students. If we cannot do so, then we are required to pay aid and low. That aid and low amount is set by the state. So if we don't have a route to put them on, then we have to pay the parent back per child.
Is it your assessment that the municipalities' use of the pilot program with developers negative impacts our budget processes?
We are looking at that and researching in terms of what it could have been done in terms of getting some money, some money from the housing. So we still have to be, connect the community board and also, but it has, it definitely, the housing has its factor.
I think you touched on that, the preschool programs bringing a lot of revenue. I can only speak to reviving drive, but it also has taken up a lot of space at the D-Drive. And unfortunately, I don't know, anyways, I'm like in the schools every day, it has detracted from like some of the older kids' education experience in ways of like such like kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. They're now, like, I guess before the preschool came in, they would have more classrooms where they'd have a designated art classroom and a designated science classroom and a designated, whatever the other extracurriculars are, right? Health. When we go to parent-teacher night, we're often talking to those extracurricular people, saying, okay, why aren't there more activities? Like when you're learning about germs, why aren't there more like Petri dish, you know, pepper in the Petri dish type of things? And all of them say, because they don't have a designated classroom, they can't cart around all these experiences to incorporate in their learning. And you're talking about like kindergarten or first grade, second grade, they need these hands-on learning experiences. They can't just be listening to a teacher drone on in lecture format. And I think that pretty good, a lot of the distractibility, and they have very limited outside time. And you're talking for like several hours a day, they might be outside for like a 10-minute recess. By the time they leave the classroom and get outside, there's just not enough like movement for them. And so I don't know if we're looking at, like, expanding these programs are great, but are we looking at what it's taking away from the education experience in like combining classrooms and these teachers not being able to like teach to their full ability? Do you guys look at those things? And how do you navigate them? I mean, short of expanding reviving drive and classroom size, what's the end goal?
So we do, and then a lot of that comes through our pre-level meetings, personal meetings, but I appreciate your feedback, so we can address those concerns. We sometimes don't hear from our teaching staff that however, whether they shy away from, I think, you know, they shy away from telling us about how that, but I appreciate your feedback, I know definitely. So there will not, this was probably our last year in terms of expanding anymore. When we talk about preschool expansion aid, the state determines the number of students that we will be able to serve. So according to their convention, we are able to serve 500 preschool age students that are four years old. We will not be able to meet that, they call it universe, we will not meet that universe because of place. So we're not going to be taking many of the classrooms or anything like that. So we're now, we're at about, we're at 90% of meaning, we're at 90% of being for universe. And the DOE will provide, she will provide the June, she will call the building, things like that, in terms of specials and things. So she will get to be back on her, but she's also questioning why we're not at 100%.
You say because there is some-
All right. You said there's 120 children coming from the Glassworks. I'm not sure with the pilot program, with all these classes that are being built there, why isn't there the tax dollars to cover all of that? And if it's not, if they're not collecting those taxes, then why isn't Aberdeen picking up that? Because they have the property, they put all these houses there, they can put all these children in, why don't that thing not get the burden and why is it pulling on us?
We're not experts in the pilot program, so I don't want to speak to something, give you proper information, but we'll definitely take the feedback and look more into.
I could just quickly answer, a couple of bills, a board bill, so you've got to use word of the municipal government. So in New Jersey, payment load tax agreements do not have to include school districts by law. That, so that's not the school district's decision by any stretch. I understand your concern. I used to work in New York, in New York, the school district had to be involved, so it's very different here.
I've mentioned that there's 760 special ed students in the 425, I'm just curious, how much do you spend for special ed students? How does the current life student, what are you spending for your special ed?
So, cost per student, we're right, because it's depending on program and depending at their condition. So we have a variety of programs ranging from where a student may have been identified and had an IP and a medical education center. I support some students receive cooperative source, and that's a good one.
So are you counseling your specialized, specialized, and your local path?
It's acceptable, and that's because we have more students, we offer you more programs. So for next year, we're projected to add three additional special ed classrooms, some for autism, and also for the serial. So there, that's, just to, they have to be compliant in terms of adherence to their IP. So cost definitely, for added district, they've got a capital margin, we keep talking about it, is because that cost could be anywhere from $120,000 to $300,000 for one student. And there's another cap. So because when we look at added district, added district preschools, it's not only just their education in terms of where they go to school, or paying them, say, you know, $90,000. They get a fire nurse, that's an additional $120,000, tack on any additional services that can have to pay to school, it can calculate to $300,000, almost $1,000 in transportation. So we, each year, we in May, and we're preparing for this now, is we are able to apply for extraordinary needs. Each year, last year, we submitted over $7 million worth of reimbursements. We did not get $7 million, we got $1.000.
I have two questions. So far, you mentioned earlier about the-
I have two questions. So far, you mentioned earlier about the contracting of the special education therapists, and then you were going to hire them. You mentioned something about part-time hiring, so are you saying that you're going to hire some part-time folks from the contractors to work in the school district? In addition to the therapists that are already in the school district, or are you cutting their hours to part-time? That was my first question.
So it's, we're hiring, so we are, we are recommending to hire part-time staff under the Maria contract, our teacher contract. And in addition to that, we still will have contracted services, but we're to increase in the contracted services. So for example, because numbers, students who require, who receive speech language services, it may not, the staff number, maybe the contractor, that's that number out. And that's really, it may be that we'll see the part-time specialists there.
Okay. And the matter of concern is just with regards to special education classes, like I'm a child in Enzo. So they do get, you know, the specials where they get switched classes, like art, music, library, computers. But I have been hearing in the last few weeks, just doing a liaison at Strathmore, for parents that they're not always necessarily getting their specials because there's a shortage of staff and things are happening. But what is frustrating as a parent is that nobody's really communicating that to us personally on a whole. We hear about it through the grapevine, because maybe somebody at the school conventions, or maybe a parent overheard something, or maybe, you know, a parent works in the school and so they hear things. So it's just frustrating because it's like, so they're missing out on these things because of this, what's happening. So for 2025, 2026, what is, what is their plan for what you're going to do about that? That can be served the school district, that's my second question.
So unfortunately, there's an absolute shortage of professors. They graduated last year, and they stated, which was seven students from TCM, which is the top school's graduation. It's happening, it's happening. So we try, we advertise, we recruit, we post about social media, et cetera, and we want subs to apply, you know, for ESS. It's not only just the teachers, but the substitutes. However, I have no transparency, sometimes the company will send people that we don't want.
When you say that company, do you mean that you have a? Oh, ESS, okay.
So meaning that they're, they're not qualified to be your.
Just out of any, you know, just a, I know that you have a, the ESS, but did the school district ever think about not just utilizing them? But also like you guys have an HR department, so I worked in HR and benefits in my, my past history. And we used to go out to the schools and recruit these people. I used to recruit nursing for healthcare, I'd go there, they'd have a job fair, you'd meet them. Because sometimes going through your contractor doesn't always mean they're going to be the best candidates. Sometimes they're just pushing people through because, you know, you're paying them to give you people, but they're not really looking at everything. They're just like, oh, they graduated, okay, and like you said, they're not sending you what you need, they're just sending you just because. So you're kind of wasting money that way too, because you're not getting what you need, and then our kids are not getting what they need. That was my last question.
So I was a parent, but years ago, they did have, it wasn't contracted out. A lot of districts, unfortunately, they just didn't utilize a contracted service. We can look into it and see in maybe a pilot, maybe a business building, is what it would look like. I have to, you know, talk to the town to see what it would look like now.
Like you find a source or some gift list of all the capabilities?
So we stood, my prior district, we had one person, then she went down the list, and she had like 10 people, she had, and we had a lot of. That's, and it was easier to do. I guess it's just shifted where there's, there's not enough people. But we're open to being creative and kind of trying something new, because we do know that it is a concern for all of us, it's a concern for you, it's a concern for us, and it's more important to concern for our kids. Because they are missing out on the critical activities and.
Why, you said that we're going to have an extra thousand students or so, how are we going to have some? Like, is this an amount like, I don't think this is going to be a balance.
It's not next year. Not next year, but it's projected. So the demography, 29, it's like, next year.
Right, so, oh, next year, I thought next year.
Oh, my God, I would die.
Okay, I thought you said.
No, I'm sorry, no, clarification. And we're happy to have this study and share the information out to a public sector, we'll make sure that we do a great job with sharing that, and we'll, we'll present. But a thousand students that there is projected is over by 23rd, so we looked at over 230, and then even beyond that.
Are there any plans on expanding the buildings?
I would love to, I don't know where to build them.
Where are they coming from? If they're coming from the developers that have pilot programs, not if we have these towns, you know, you did work with pilot programs.
I think it's both, I think it's both, because, and I don't quote the numbers, but there were a thousand, there were 1,200 units, or 1,200 new housing that was built up to today. They're projecting another, say, 700. So not only the building, in my assessment, this is just me, as I'm trying to what I see happening in the communities, that we also have a high turnover with people who are moving in. So our seniors are leaving, we don't want them to leave, right? We still want them to be part of the community, but our seniors are leaving, and then you're having new families move in that are young, other young with kids, or they're going to have kids. So in the demography study, what it's going to show is the age group, like 30s, or census data, they're going to look at that, and they're going to share, okay, there's an age group, say, a certain percentage from 19 to 20, or 35, childbearing, care rejected, you know, centers. So it's really telling, but I, you know, I agree with you. And we would like to work with the towns to kind of share that, and I've started to be a fan of share that with the board, as far as with, especially with.
My other question was, the money that we would raise for this tax, all the money goes into the school district, like every money that is raised with tax levy?
Through the tax levy incentive, this is only for schools, and so it will go directly to the school.
Okay, and then also, are we allowed to use it to help with the blessing? The portion of it, is that allowed, or is there like special, like, it can only be used for this?
It has to be used for a therapeutic education.
So, so patient is not.
As long as it meets the specifications of what we currently provide, are we able to do that? So if, if the, if the, we're going to vote for the tax incentive program, we want, as a team, to make sure, we want to make sure, whatever the money is made from this, we're going to sustain it. We're not just to now do this, and we're okay for the next two years, and then you're taking the right. And say that to be totally transparent, because some parents have asked, you know, in terms of feedback, you see from the board about the staff, in certain positions, you can add things, you can add things to extracurricular. We need it to be, we need to be, make sound decisions, we're sustaining. Because if you're in a, in a, in a position in the next few years, where you see a decrease in state aid, and a decrease in federal grants. Yes, so if the increase to operation. And the other, what we also want to make sure we're going to close out is that with the tax incentive program, if we do submit the application, then we will be meeting with the finance committee. The board has a finance committee in terms of, so that this way, everyone knows where the, where dollars are being spent. So if you received an additional million dollars, you know, where, where are we spending it, and what changes do we make? And we want to, you know, we want to ramp up and celebrate that, because it is a issue. Next year, that money goes to like, our taxes go down? It would be in perpetuity, so if, it would increase your tax base forever. And the state, as far as we know, they're only making a pot of money for the one here, and we will see that one time. We still have to discuss that with the board in terms of. Yes, and so it would be on the board agenda, April 10, recommendation, and then shortly after that, then we'll share that information out. We're going to take all my questions.
So first, I want to say thank you for having this meeting, because there are other districts across the state that are facing the same thing, and they are not being as transparent as you by far. So first and foremost, thank you for this. And I know it's a hard thing to address, you probably expect a little bit of a witch on tonight. I completely understand that you guys have increased costs, right? We all, between state increases, we have no idea what's going to happen at the federal level in the next year, BDU, and it's just every time we turn around, something has happened now. So now we get this letter, and here's the school district, red, red, like, we need $6 million so we can get $300,000. I mean, it's kind of like you tricked over a dollar, but it does make sense, and that's on there. That being said, you're going to submit this budget, let's say it gets approved for the year, right? You're going to submit this budget now, April 24th, it then has to go to the state, and the state can still say yes or no in June, if there's going to be a demand of additional funding.
Or, no, in addition to, in addition to. You are correct, this has happened before, where the state has actually decreased first aid come June or July, and then you have to show what, you know, what would be deducted from our local budget.
Right, so my concern is, you're going to do all this, right, freak everybody out, the state's going to be like psyched. The state is the state, I mean, we've been here long enough, we all know how this thing works, and more than likely, you're going to get the class or whatever it's going to be. So that is a little concerning. My second question is, I understand that there is a fine line between local politics and the school board, but at some point, and I've been to many, many board meetings down to the town. I haven't seen anybody here going to the town and saying, hey, guys, you're making all these decisions, and I understand that our budgets are different, but something's got to give here, we got to start it. So you don't have a conversation, because with the town doing it, what they're doing is criminal, it's criminal. I don't see any board members here, you know, you guys had one of those meetings too, something has to happen.
We have directly. Two, two years ago, we, we did start having monthly meetings with them, and then quarterly meetings with both towns. And then the other thing that the board started is they have a liaison for town, so that they can make connections, both ways.
And my next question, shared services, heat port put out the same letter pretty much verbatim that you guys did last time. Is there any opportunity to continue to look at more shared services across the districts?
We do, so we have, we have meetings, whether that's for transportation, special ed, business, curriculum and instruction, so that we all know what each other is doing, so that if there is a program or there is a way. I mean, down to, let me tell you, for the major area, we let Hazel do it, but we went out for a garbage contract, so that we can reduce the cost. We're just picking up basic things. And so we'll continue to do that, and we continue to assess every contract, we continue to assess every simple subscription that's utilized by students. So we're, we're changing that yearly based on what the district needs and what we're seeing. And we're also getting that from, you know, teacher feedback and administrative feedback, so that we're making those decisions, so that, you know, maybe last year, we needed a different subscription, but this year, we really need a PETA too. We're making those changes so that we can use those savings to offset pay for something else.
One, two, three, that letter, that letting them know they've already voted on. They already, yeah, it wasn't, that was just a, hey, we're doing this, not like, like, having a conversation with the community and letting them know what's going on. That was them letting them know, oh, by the way, here you go, and you know, so you know too, why you see me, so when I get to the county, I'm not about to work, I'm the county liaison with Joe Montez. So we've been having those conversations.
Yes, and, and I'm the county liaison with Madeline, so we have also been, we were in communication before the letter went out to the community, just like the house, because our, we want to make sure that, because we know taxes are going to be raised there as well. So we want to make sure it's all balanced, so we're not hitting the community all at once. So we have had that conversation, we're having those conversations, how it's impacted us, you know, it's part of town, maybe a little one and the other, but, you know, we are, we've been talking to them, just what's we, and that just recently started a few months ago.
I did just want to bring up again, I'm far from a lawyer and or this administration, but basically, the pilot program means that we're not receiving any money to pay the children that we're educating. So Glassworks was a pilot program, and we're not receiving tax to cover the kids that we're educating, so that comes out of everybody's pockets. So yes, pilots are mandated in New Jersey, I understand, but the problem lies is that when they do pilot programs, sometimes the towns will work with the district and give them a percentage to cover what they're going to have to spend. Unfortunately, that hasn't been the case, so that really does affect, and, and, and I know our administration has been looking into that legal and what we can and cannot do for that. So thank you for bringing that up.
I just want to comment that pilot programs, should we try that work, shouldn't there be an expiration?
It's not the same, it's a payment in lieu of tax, P-I-L-O-T, payment in lieu of tax, that's the pilot, not like what you're thinking, I know what you mean, like a what-if trial type thing, no, this is a 30-year pilot.
So that's for this?
30 years, 30 years.
So I think the, the challenge for us, like, and I'm speaking for myself, as second-year superintendent, so we weren't, I don't know when, I don't know the history in terms of when the planning was taking place, or when the building was happening. I know when I started 10 years ago, then the demographer was here, and I believe that board at that time thought that there, there was another building that was being built, and they thought that that would impact in moment. At that time, the demographer said no. Yeah, so they said it wasn't going to impact in moment. Now we're seeing with the most recent development that it is, so, so when I say, I mean, I'd like to speak to legal and to the towns to see if there's anything we can do, it's kind of, I'm kind of backtracking, you know, backpedaling a little bit, because there are things already in motion, so I just wanted to say that.
So, my name is Mark Bishop, and I live here in Aberdeen with my wife, our two-and-a-half-year-old son, and our two-and-a-half-week-old newborn. And all of my children will be going to the school system, and I want nothing more for them, and every child in this district to have access to exceptional education. First, I want to start by thanking board for your holding this forward. I understand that giving residents a seat at the table for a conversation is not required, and it's not very common. I genuinely appreciate that you chose us to give you the community before making such major decisions. And I think that this is what public accountability and transparency should look like. Now, to be clear, I'm not here because I have brothers from the university, it's quite the opposite. I'm one of the ones that's been in our schools, and that's exactly why I've been so critical of the way that we've structured our building. We have multimillion-dollar properties in town, such as the Ford's at Glassworks, it was just sold for $57 million, and they are paying zero school taxes because the pilot agreement is going to improve by the county council, which this board had no say in, which is a sign. That one development alone would have generated $800,000 this year for our schools, had it been taxed properly, like the rest of the school. But it's not, and our families are being asked to make up that difference, and that's what we've wanted many such problems in town, and that's on average inside, which is even more, I don't think it's going to be in that. So I understand that that's environment for, so yes, I support public education, for enhancing the community to take on a year of 10% effective tax increase, without a clear breakdown of where the money would go. That's our response, that is, from my trust, and I can agree to that. This district already submitted a balanced 2025 budget within their account, without cutting a program into its own. This extra $5 million is not part of that budget, but keep answering the state's tax lady cap adjustment, but under adequate supervision, and it is optional. So I only have one simple request, show us the right information. Just because we can raise the money. Just because we can't raise the money does not mean that we should, and if we're going to consider it, then we need to do so carefully. Does the increase that we're going without likely cause some residents to lose their homes? Here's a solution that I'm proposing to the board. Answer these questions for us first. Where is this money going to go? We need an itemized plan for each funding level that's being considered. $1 million, $3 million, and $5 million, show where every dollar is going. Show us why we need it, every line item, we need justification, why do we need it, why do we need it now, what problem will be solved? And what's the impact? What measurable benefit will these investments bring to our students, and how will that success be tracked? I think just in doing that, we will find out if we really need this money and if so, exactly how much. A couple of examples that I came up with, you know, say, by item A, we need $400,000 for a new bathroom. And then you've seen in neighboring districts that this has resulted in vastly improving test scores in our student. Residents may turn around and say, hey, I think that might be worth investing more of my tax money. Say, well, so, we need $250,000 to renovate an inflated lobby. I think that residents might say, hey, I don't think that we really need that right now. So that's why we need the itemization. And until that's been done, I don't think that we're, not only are we unprepared to approve this, but we're ready to bring out a conversation. I just don't think that you did the homework on that yet. If we're going to ask working families, seniors, young homeowners to stretch even further in this economy, the very least that we can do is show them where every dollar is going to go, which is why it matters. And I understand, you know, talking about the pilot programs, and I understand that the schools are in kind of short change for a whole time. And I understand that this is an easy way to bang up the lowest revenue that you guys should be getting for a whole time. And what I mean is that you need to do is sit there and look at exactly how much we need. Because if we even have funding options at a million, $3 million, $5 million, that tells me that we don't know exactly how much to need, and that's what we should be doing. I would say don't take the easy route, you know, I know you guys work hard already, you have a little order, trying to figure this out. And I, I think that that's the best way to get the meeting going, to set that meeting going. I don't know, if you can accomplish that by getting here before the deadline, what happens if you pass that deadline?
Hey, um, Ken Agin, you've been involved in the school district many years, my kids, my group. I miss the mural of that, it's really like, it's been a while since I've been here. All I want to do is just tell you how we got here. There was a time, actually, back around 2011, it was quite that, but the people of the townships actually got to vote on the school budget. But I think Governor Christie was the guy that was the one, he made those big incentives to move away from that because budgets used to fail, and districts would be guaranteed up to a 2% increase every year without having to, you know, go out to the public and get the approval. But the dark side, though, is that that goes past, like, the Senate, the white members, two of us voted against it. And my reason back at the time is, when you give up a right to the state, you don't get it back. I don't know if it's possible to do that, but the more important thing about it is to easily put a check on the township. Because when the budget failed, Board of Education had to negotiate that budget with the township, and they were fine with that, because how much was going to go in. So now, what happened with this, I knew this thing was going to come, all of this building got done. And township council isn't responsible for any of it, they don't have to take any heat for it, it's completely on the school district. They have no control over it. So they have no skin in their ass now, so it's easy for them to do these projects because they don't have to stand up to the public when this stuff is going to get tough and say, well, we have to negotiate and restore some of this money. So that's kind of, that's kind of how we got here. So the lesson there is, when you have a right, don't give it up, don't give it up for the state because you're never going to have. It's like income taxes, I think that was supposed to be temporary in New Jersey, it's still here, right? So just remember, anytime like some kind of public body gets its hands on money, they never let it go. But I feel bad for you, I, I've been up there, and you have a hard decision here. Because you have to balance what you got to do for kids, but, you know, there's plenty of people in the town that, you know, they don't, they don't have 5% of your salary like weathered out. Fortunately, some people do, but you have to kind of keep that in mind, and you have to balance that with the education. Joe, I don't know what the answer is to it, I just, this is how we got here for those of you that don't know that. And this is what it is, and hopefully, hopefully, people should take their, they should take their complaints to train. Because the school funding in the state of New Jersey has been a disaster for the last 30 years. And you're righteous in having the money follow the special ed students, and follow the students that had free and reduced lunch. So that you don't have districts that gentrified, that wanted school budgets, you can spend $30,000, $40,000 a student. And then you have a lot of middle-class districts getting absolutely crushed, you know, by the formula because of the way it is. And until they reform that, nothing is going to change. That's it. Thank you. You guys are a charity of the farm, a tier of 12,000 teachers. But you guys are a community of county leadership, I still have to be fair, you're on your side. Are they maybe confused on, maybe they're maybe reading some code, some files, or? Are you guys getting any assistance at all? They really haven't said anything to you, or you guys know them, or probably, they say, hey, we're about it, so we're back here.
I guess that's a more refined question, so. Decisions made?
You're a board member, you need to vote.
I need to decide whether to raise the tax on that level.
There's a board meeting, um, at 10, which is this week, it's on Thursday, and then the budget hearing is on the 24th. If you'd like to ask any questions or any additional feedback, please use the Google Thursday forum on under the Board of Education site. You can see your feedback in there, but our parents have tried to bring back already as well. So we're open to hear and listen, and that's what we're here to do. It's not, while we are responsible to create the budget and work with all the staff members and the industry team and present it to the board, we know it's a, it's a community, so we care about it.
I just wanted to say really quick that we would like to work with the town, we probably would be more comfortable with the town, we're trying to make those inroads by having these liaisons, relationships, especially, we have, we're kind of still coming back off of the COVID year here, so we're starting to kind of get back to going with a lot of things, including committees, like this committee, that too. So I, I would really welcome that, if anybody, I don't know if anybody's here from the town, or, but we do have our liaisons, and they try to keep them updated on what's going on. I know that we end up having a slowly, it's definitely a relationship, we just happen to have a personal relationship, so it makes it a little easier. I mean, we would like that, because a lot of them really.
See, the board manager, is there a way to, for more transparency, when we have these conversations with the town, is there a way to communicate that with the public? Hey, we met with the town today, and this happened, and that happened.
Yeah, at the board meetings, we do, we update those liaison conversations, whether it was the liaison from the board building to their town counterpart, and vice versa. And they do appreciate, you know, I will say communication has a big role, and they do appreciate that we share with them the wine-skiing program that we have for the summer that's going to supplement the rent programs for Avenue Madeline, we appreciate that because they always run out of space. So now we have an additional option for parents for the summer, so. A lot of things, you know, they've been keeping them informed, and even just, even just simple things like, yeah, construction around with bus routes and all that stuff. And even things like, you know, where we are in the budget process, or they are in the budget process, just trying to keep that, by communication open. That's from the board liaison side, and as they mentioned, they also had conversations with the town measures, with the police departments. We have a memorandum of agreement with the police department, so those, those, I mean, we really are trying to keep those lines of communication open. You know, there's only, it's, it's a two-way street, right? So that's what I'm saying.
Hi, everyone, I'm Cindy. Yeah. I go to a lot of these board meetings, a lot of the stuff that they're talking about is not new. They talked about it at the last board meeting, how this was sprung on them. And I have to be honest with you, it was very disappointing to have me and maybe one or two other people at these very important meetings, and go to the council meetings. Again, very important meetings that maybe only one or two people go to. So I think that seeing an increase of people who attend these things would be wonderful. The next thing I want to talk about really fast is the budget, right? So I remember last year, you know, we had let go of a couple of teachers, there was a lot of upset parents, and then I started watching like the news coming in of like the bloodbath that was happening in other districts. Like extracurriculars completely cut, letting go of 150 teachers. I know that I'm following the thing in Middletown, where they are closing two schools. And then council came and rescued them, and now they're not closing anything. Because the council is giving money to the school district to make the residents happy. I know that in Homedale, they have a pilot program, everyone loves Bellworks, right? And the council is sharing the payment in lieu of taxes. So basically, Glassworks pays the council money every year. Money that does not go to educating students of Glassworks, okay? Everyone's aware of that, okay? So Homedale is taking that money and sharing it, they get money from Bellworks, and they're taking that money and they're sharing $600,000, it may not sound like a lot, but that's a nice chunk of money, with the district. I think that's what we need to do, I think we need to go to the council. There's a lot of building, guys, there's a lot of building coming, there's a huge building going up by the train station. They just approved a bunch of houses over by Bellworks, they just rezoned four buildings over by Glassworks. They have, they just rezoned four buildings over by Glassworks, that they rezoned from, from commercial over to residential. So, I mean, like, I really think people need to start some conversations meetings because I think this is going to be an ongoing problem for us. And I know my taxes since 2020, it's gone from $9,000 to $15,000. I can't be the only one who's experiencing this, so, thank you.
Just a real quick question, the demographer report, will that be given to us before April 10? Or is that going to be released to the public before April 10? It's going to be a draft, when is it going to be finalized? Not to be a senate, right, but a thousand people over 3,900 seems like, even if everything got built, is like on high, high, high side, right? I think the bigger concern, and I don't know where I sit on this, right, but I really, I think in a meeting with a public in mind, because your, your budget's 95 million, right? If we add even just one, I mean, we're talking about like a 1% increase in the school budget. I think like the bigger crisis is you're talking about our school population exploding by 20%, right? Like, that million is going to be a drop in the bucket, you know what I mean? And then, so, like, I don't want my taxes to increase, right? Like, I'll do whatever I can to fight against my taxes being increased. But at the end of the day, it's like, you're, you're bound by a 2% gap, right? It sounds like the state's only going to be able to walk by the gap. So my concern is how accurate these districts are in the demography, especially when they're not going to be released to the public prior to the board making a, you know, a well-founded, you know, outcome of how they should vote. So that's my bigger concern, that this is going to be released to the public, that they're not going to have the final draft before the board makes a decision. I just, listen, at the end of the day, it's Glassworks, 120 kids, they could build another five at Glassworks, it's not going to be a thousand kids. So I don't, and as you said, it went from 4,000 to 3,900, in 2015, we're at 3,700. We're talking about a 5% increase. Now you're talking, and you haven't given a date range for 1,000 kids, or you did, it was 20, 30, or 29, it's all five years. Listen, I'll do the first one, eat my hat, if you guys vote 40% in five years. I don't think, I don't think it's happening, within logic and reason. Buildings just don't fall back, but, so, that's my only opinion, I don't know where I sit on it. I just think you guys need more help, I don't know if this is the way to go.
Not just the new buildings, like the old developments, like Stratton.
Yeah, there's only certain amount of houses.
They were built in 62, in the 70s, we had a split scheduling because there were too many students. But then in the 90s, we closed a couple of schools because, but now they're coming back, those are where the children are coming from. We had two schools, it's fine, but I'm just saying, that is where the students.
That house, but, listen, I'm working for a league that knocks every house down and builds a triplex, a quadplex, and everything. So this isn't a localized problem, this is a new territory problem. The population is going to, you listen, in your head, it's like, yeah, competition is going to explode. There are none, just not at the rate that you expect.
So I think we're going to just take maybe one or two more questions, and then we would welcome follow-up feedback, emails, calls, unless we were supposed to end an hour ago, so I just thought it happens in order of this time. And then also, I have, I want to hear from this case about, about other, other things that could be coming into the facilities, like bond references.
So we have two bonds currently within the district, those bonds are utilized for past referendums. We will have a 2027, 2028 school year or less payment for one of those bonds. So we've been working with our architect to give us an update on a long-range facilities plan. Currently, we're waiting for some market research, which is coming to us much sooner than anticipated, it was supposed to be 12 to 18 months. We're under 12 months, we're under 18 months. So we're lucky to have that, and then we also want to utilize our architect to assist with the long-range facilities plan if necessary, so that we can really get an idea of what these facilities need. Currently, our roofing that we have, there is not one roof throughout the whole district that still has warranty, and these were built, the warranties were 15 years. Most roofs now have either 20 or 30 years. We did apply for raw grants through the state, we were approved, however, we need the money in order to put new roof on, or at least a cultural replacement. So we hear you, we do pay taxes, we are trying to figure out a solution. You know, we know when it comes to finances, where I was looking for a return on investment. Currently, with where we are, it's really a stopgap, I heard on whatever the inside, in order so that in future years, we're not changing the landscape of the whole, coming custom to, and with our, our. And I know that's really hard to hear, but, you know, we see the news every single day, we see how revenue streams are changing for every single district throughout our state. And we have been very creative for a lot of 10 years, and now we're asking for. So if we did, they need to, in order for us to actually replace our roofing, we do not have the money to do that, so we would have to go out for a referendum. There's four times a year they were able to do so, and they would be, and then they would be, it's a cost, and why is that? And they would be, and they would be, it's a costly, why is necessary? But we do see our facilities needing what is necessary and why is it necessary. Would help us anticipate if differences were to be lifted or tested. But again, it's such a capital project perspective, not, not an operational effort in a perspective. That's, that's the difference of what we're asking for from this task is to help our operation of D10s. So we're talking about getting the vending, just want to remember that, that even this, even if there was any thought of going to the school town, it's having to help us fully for anything. So it's still getting, I just heard, I don't know. I'm president of the board this year, the tower, the supervisor vice president, Martinez. Board has been working hard. I want to thank them all for their dedication, they have a lot of questions, very thorough. You know, I don't, I see all comments. We care, we work really, really hard to look at all these numbers, ask all the questions that you're asking. We live here too. We don't want our taxes to go up. We have kids in the district, we have kids that have gone through the district, money are both out. So, and it's important for us to hear from you all. So we appreciate that, but we care. So the comments that the board doesn't care, I take that really personally because everyone cares.
And I did want to say something because I learned from that, that all of the board meetings are posted on YouTube. So if you want to see what happened, if you couldn't make it out, let's say you have little ones at home, they're asleep, that kind of thing, definitely check that out. They're all on YouTube and our agendas are posted ahead of time. The ton of information is, and that they're available at our courts as well. Our minutes are available at our courts as well. And the reason that it's a Google form now for feedback, for those who have in the past emailed us and now they're using a Google form, that's so that they can go straight into our email inboxes. When it wasn't emailed and it had to be filtered, somebody got to read it and then send it. This is just a lot cleaner. So I just wanted to share that. I don't have the official duties aside from being board member, but I have my quote, so ahead.
Thank you, everyone, and we look forward to continuing the conversation and your feedback.